Regarding Chapter 231, June 1975. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meetings Act was provided by the posting, mailing delivery, and filing of this notice on May 1st, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on the bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean news, the Eko Center, and tapped into Warren, and filed with the township clerk, the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please all rise and recite with me the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in it. Thank you.
Mr. Bellish?
Here.
Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Brazee?
Here.
Mrs. Chu?
Here.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Here.
Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Thank you. Taylor, Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
And Mr. Bellman?
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the April 27th, 2020 board meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu? Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Correspondents and information, Dr. Mingle, do you want to take over this part?
Yep, thank you, Mr. Bellman. Under correspondence, the board received a letter from one parent about flexible instruction and nothing to report in hip information or the other information.
Thank you very much. On the agenda, does anyone wants to discuss or pull out for a separate vote one of the items of Article 6?
I believe I do, Mr. Bellman.
This is the adoptions, the annual adoptions.
That is correct, that's where I am.
Perfect.
Item 3Q, if I could pull that to abstain.
Good, we'll pull that for a separate vote. Please, you. Okay.
I have a, I can't find it now, and I'm looking at the agenda, but there was something on there about Danielson framework, and I can't find the...
What are T, 3T?
T?
There isn't a frame for this T, yes, second item in 3T.
Okay, is that what we're discussing, is that where we can pull that?
You can pull for a discussion or for a separate vote, which one would you like?
Discussion. Discussion.
Wonderful. Anybody else? Okay.
I'll move the balance of them then. Move for adoption, the annual adoption, Section 6, 1, 2, 3A through 3P, 3R and S, 3U, Items 4 through 7.
Do I have a second?
Second, Mrs. DiMaggio said that, sorry.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Abstain.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I'll move item, Section 6, 3Q.
Second, Bellman?
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Abstain.
Mr. Brazee?
Abstain.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
I heard that we want to have a discussion about Item T, 3T.
Yeah, I just had a question, or a question or a comment, I guess. The Danielson framework, I know it's widely used, and this is not a discussion to, for it to change for us, because I think it's a good instrument, but I'm wondering if it captures everything that we want to start doing in our strategic plan, so I just wanted to recommend rethink, rethinking of the evaluation instrument we use. So, for example, I really like the Silver Strong instrument that's approved by the state because of its focus on student learning. So Danielson is kind of, it's teacher-centered, I feel like the Silver Strong has both the teacher-centered and a student-centered section, and then there's another rubric that I wanted to recommend. It's FEP out of the University of Colorado, and it, it's a framework for excellent and equitable teaching that I think also might be something to consider that aligns with our strategic plan goals. And that was it.
We sent that to a committee to review further, is my thought, the first thought, or does the administration want to talk a little bit about these things?
I don't have anything on that tonight, no, but I think that would be a curriculum committee.
Yeah, I think so, too.
I'd be, I'd be favor moving that to, for evaluation as well.
Good. Do we need a motion for that? I assume we can just put it on the agenda for the curriculum committee.
I do not believe we need a motion, if we just will move it tonight.
Wonderful. Well, we want to...
Well, no, I don't want to, yeah, I don't want to not move it, I just, I wanted to
For the future.
Bring it up as a, yeah, discussion point for us to think about for the future. Because I know that it's difficult to, it would be difficult to revise that now.
So let's please move that to the curriculum committee, and Mrs. Zahn, please.
Motion to approve Section 6, Item 3T.
No, I can do it, come here.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu?
Yes.
Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Is this just for the year, these are annual, right? We're going to look at this again?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
President's remarks. Welcome to today's virtual meeting, virtual meeting number four. In light of Mother's Day yesterday, I'd like to open this evening by thanking all mothers here and far. This year in particular, months have passed with wearing many extra hats to ensure the safety and well-being of our children. So those moms here tonight, and those who may watch our recap later, thank you for all you continue to do to help our children learn and grow during this unconventional year. To the teachers, thank you for being like sainted mothers to our children and champions, supporters of the moms at home. Many teachers have sent special video messages and emails out to all the moms reinforcing that we're all in this village together, supporting each other as we ready to take care of the children. The past weeks, we have heard much discussion of milestones the children are missing. Let us instead focus on the creative and memorable alternatives we're able to provide during this unique time to our children. As we turn to tonight's agenda, let us be mindful and grateful as we work together to continue to keep our children and families safe and happy. On our agenda, I want to highlight Item C6, the retirement of Ms. Lepore, health teacher in the middle school, who has close to 18 years of service within our schools, and Ms. Anderson, speech teacher at ALT, who has close to 24 years of service. Together, these two teachers have over 40 years of experience in our district. Thank you very much for your service. And last, I want to remind you to vote for our middle school band. The last six days of voting, and we have a solid lead of 7,000 votes over the Hillsboro Middle School, which is far bigger than our middle school. If you need a link to vote, the link is in Dr. Mingle's updates that come out to all of us on Monday, Wednesday, and Friday. And with that, I give over to Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. And I'm proud of many of those same things that you mentioned, I appreciate you giving the shout out to the middle school band. I know they're very excited there about how that's going, it's open until the 7th. I echo your words of appreciation for our staff, last week was Teacher Appreciation Week, Nurses Appreciation Day, and the week before Principal Appreciation Day, and for Mother's Day, we know everybody's working really hard in all different facets of making sure that we continue the learning that's going on all throughout the community. On the agenda tonight, I did want to make a special thank you to Mrs. Lenhart for her work related to Items B6 and B12. As you see on the agenda, normally the transportation reauthorization is pretty standard, but given the unstandard situation we're in right now and unknown factors for the fall, there's a lot of work behind the scenes that goes on to make sure those agenda items are ready for everybody. I also want to point our attention ahead to the next board meeting, which is on June 8th. On Monday, June 8th, even though we'll be in a virtual space, we will still have our middle school student recognition ceremony. Mr. Valar and Ms. Mensinger are working with our staff on developing a virtual celebration of the middle school students, many of those activities that we normally highlight are not occurring, but some of them are, and so we'll be able to celebrate our staff and our students that way. And our principals will be putting together excellence in education videos so that we can celebrate our staff recipients as well. So, as Mr. Bellman said, it's unconventional, for sure, but we're making the most of those circumstances and trying to make sure we continue to celebrate the important things that are happening. I also want to remind everyone that Summer Fund has been relaunched as of last Friday. It's only open until May 21st, which is next Thursday, due to the need to completely revamp the entire program and make sure we're ready to go for our students. Really incredible program that the staff put together on pretty short notice, so if you haven't checked it out, or if you maybe haven't participated in Summer Fund in the past because of other programs, I would encourage you to take a look. It is open to students from outside school districts as well, and so if you know people who might be interested, it is all available virtually, so definitely want to check out Summer Fund information in the updates and on the website. I'll talk more about distance learning and our return to school procedures later on, but that's it for right now, Mr. Bellman, thank you.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to the presentation, 2020 to 2025 strategic plan. Dr. Mingle, is that a pre-recorded video, or?
It is, so it'll take me just a minute to switch over to sharing the screen and playing the video. It went back, it's... Just give me one second. Good evening, I'm Dr. Mingle, Superintendent of Schools, and we are here to present an overview of the proposed strategic plan for 2020 to 2025. As a reminder, we began this process with an objective of developing the Warren Township School Strategic Plan 2025 to guide the work of the district for the next five years. And within that objective, we felt that we had an opportunity to become a lighthouse district for whole child strategic planning. Our timeline began back in the fall of 2018, when we finalized a vision for this process at the board level, conducted an RFP in the winter and spring leading into 2019, planning in the summer of 2019, kickoff events with staff, community, and student feedback in the fall of this school year, action planning over the winter, and we are now ready to recommend a plan for adoption to the Board of Education. Delayed by about a month and a half due to our COVID-19 school closure, we are ready nonetheless. It's important to acknowledge the board members who began this process back in 2018, 19, and continued the process here in 2019, 20. Thank you especially to Board President Chris Bellman this year, and Board President David Brazee last year, for their leadership and support in the process as we've gone through. In addition, several members of the board, along with district leaders, worked as an ad hoc strategic planning committee. Thank you to those individuals for their support and leadership throughout the process. As you can see, there were a couple of changes along the way as board chairs changed or as district administrators moved in and out as well. I'd also like to thank Mr. Ben Schuldner and Dr. Rebecca Stillwell from Orgwell Global, who were hired to service facilitators of the process and worked especially with our action teams and our community members to get great data and then use that data to make the recommendations that you'll see on the following slides. Our action teams were comprised of three co-chairs per team, made up of a staff member, an administrator, and a community member, and supported by a district representative who was a liaison between the action team and the ad hoc strategic planning committee. You can see the members of two of the action teams on the slide here, competencies and voice and engagement. And then our members serving for equity and consistency and health, wellness, and safety. It's my pleasure to thank those co-chairs for their leadership above and beyond the call of duty, as well as all of the members of those teams for their tireless activity and insights. It wasn't always easy, they persevered and worked really hard to bring what we believe to be four wonderful commitments for the district to focus on for the next five years. As a reminder, the mission of the district has not changed and remains to provide through a safe, nurturing, yet challenging environment, all students with an outstanding education that engages students and fosters academic excellence, healthy social and emotional development, and a lifelong passion for learning, an education centered in the whole child. We believe that this plan starts from a place of strength. When we did data collection with our various constituencies, these are the areas they told us that we were strongest in. Our students talked most about their teachers and their clubs and activities. Our community members complemented the learning environment, the teachers, school policy, resource availability, and parental involvement. Our faculty and staff complemented student performance, technology availability, the student support programs that were in place, our facilities, and parental involvement. And our administrators joined by complementing our comprehensive student experience, parental involvement, our teaching staff, and overall district operations. So we're starting in a good place, and as our facilitators reminded us time and again, when you ask people a question about what can be better, you're going to get answers to that question. And although that can feel negative, we started from a place of strength on which we are going to build. And we are moving towards new levels of student achievement. So extensive conversations took place at the ad hoc strategic planning committee level about how to organize the ideas that are contained within the strategic plan, with student achievement being at the apex, that all other things are working towards that. Within the plan, you'll see four commitment areas, competencies, which we're calling sort of an area that is most closely aligned to student achievement, plus supporting goals around voice and engagement, equity and consistency, health, wellness, and safety. Those four commitment areas, which you can see on the slide here, represent our focus. Each of our strategic planning committees, well, action team committees, will share some more information about those commitments. We have an area of competency, an area of voice and engagement, an area of equity and consistency, and an area of health, wellness, and safety. It's now my pleasure to turn it over to the staff member chairs of those committees to give you more information about each one.
Good evening, this is Ally Tuja, principal of Central School, and I am here with Mrs. Lynn Deegan, teacher at Warren Middle School, and together we are going to present the goals and opportunities for action under the competencies umbrella of the strategic plan. So first, I will turn it over to Mrs. Deegan to tell you about Goal 1. We recognize that our students must be armed with the skills necessary to succeed in a global society, and we have to consider ways that we invite our students to participate in this global community. In addition to simple content knowledge, our students need to be adept in skills such as critical thinking, problem solving, and collaboration. In order for our students to develop these very necessary skills, the instructional culture must be one in which students and staff engage in reflective processes based on data and assessments to determine opportunities for individual student growth. As you can see in our goals list, we suggest beginning with a needs-based approach and review of our current projects to see how they are meeting those objectives. The second goal in this area is to link that each student's social, emotional competencies to maximize growth and capabilities. It's important to point out that when we started to go through the stakeholder data, comments about social, emotional skills and well-being outnumbered comments about academic skills by just about a margin of 2 to 1, so we knew that it was important to make this a goal. Because the conversation about social, emotional skills is a newer conversation than that of academic skills, it's important that we first do our due diligence and research best practices in this area so we can make sure that any common approaches that we adopt are rooted in those practices. Next, we need to make sure that we're all speaking the same language, so that means that we'll need to educate our stakeholders, our students, our parents, our staff, our community, to make sure that everyone understands what these social, emotional competencies are and what their individual roles are in supporting students in the development of these competencies. Similarly to our academic goal, it's important that we're assessing those skills that we've deemed essential. So it's likely that we'll have to either revise or develop some assessments to assess the skills in these, of students. And then lastly, it's important that we evaluate the structures and the master schedules that we already have in place to see whether or not they support the development of these social, emotional skills, and if not, we may need to make some revisions. So that does it for the competencies umbrella of the strategic plan.
Hi, I'm Stacey Junior, curriculum supervisor, and with me, although many miles away, is Kristin Stoinoff, our instructional specialist. Together, we served as co-chairs on the Voice and Engagement Committee of Strategic Plan. Opportunities for action within Voice and Engagement fall under two distinct goals. Let me turn it over to Kristin to explain the first.
The first goal is centered around having positive, ongoing, two-way communication between all stakeholders. This includes student to teacher, teacher to parent, admin to parent, et cetera. Recognizing we have processes in place, our opportunities for action focus on enhancing the current state of communication to make things more efficient, consistent, and transparent. Examples of this are currently being implemented by Dr. Mingle during the ongoing school closure.
The second goal will also focus on communication, this time when there are major changes taking place in the district. The intent is to look for a process of change management that will incorporate stakeholder voice and determine how to best message information. Change management gives consideration to the people side of change in order to achieve a desired outcome. This will be the process that gets employed throughout other areas of strategic plan where major change may take place.
We look forward to future work with the Voice and Engagement Committee, as well as other areas of the strategic plan.
Hi, everyone, my name is Scott Cook, I'm the proud principal of Mount Horeb School, and also co-chair of the Equity and Consistency Committee as part of the strategic planning process. I co-chair this committee with Rebecca Sutherland, fifth grade teacher from Central. Tonight, we're presenting our two goals. Goal number one, to provide each student with a rich array of academic enrichment and diverse social experiences. All students in Warren Township schools are deserving of the best learning experiences possible. Each student is also a member of a community within their own school, and each school is so wonderfully different. We believe that each building needs to retain its own identity, feel, and culture of which parents, students, and staff are so very proud and have helped to create and foster. Our committee believes that within each school, each student in Warren Township should have a similar set of experiences. Rebecca can explain this further in a moment. Also, within the data and an integral part of this process, will be attention given to the balance of workloads and responsibilities among staff members. Driving our decisions will be the student experience, but we want to recognize and honor the fact that it is our devoted, loyal, and highly professional staff who will continue to create the exemplary Warren Township learning experience. Rebecca?
In order to support this goal, we created a variety of action steps. We plan to ensure that staff workload and responsibilities are balanced in support of our student experiences, since we believe that they are directly related to one another. We plan to create criteria within categories that guide school-based decision-making to evaluate our current school models and configurations, which will include conversations around redistricting, redistricting, and looking at grade-level buildings. We plan to share school-specific experiences with the public and address employee feedback specific to equity and consistency. Now looking at Goal 2, create a culture that values diversity. This goal has a focus on equity in its truest form. Our student population has become more and more diverse over the years, which gives us all an opportunity to learn, to embrace, and to celebrate the various backgrounds, cultures, and ethnicities that make up our student population in our community. We felt that it might be a missed opportunity to not include this important goal that incorporates continued consideration, sensitivity, and appreciation to all students and their backgrounds. Our hope is that all families, students, and staff members feel welcome, included, and represented in all that we do here as a district. Scott?
And to support this goal, we hope to explore our changing student population and the changing demographic. We want to analyze how and if we're meeting the diverse needs of our student population and explore how we can further support our diverse student population. And lastly, we want to develop consistent communication, communication where staff members with diverse roles meet with principals to discuss staff concerns and job satisfaction. While we are confident that many of these factors are solidly in place, we are eager to continue with these two goals to ensure that Warren Township schools continue to shine brighter every day. Thank you all very much.
Hello, everyone, I'm Christine Smith, principal of ALT. I'm here with Jess Halpern, who is a teacher from our middle school. Together, we helped chair the health, wellness, and safety portion of the strategic planning goal. So I'm going to turn it over to Jess to introduce Goal 1.
Hi, the Health, Wellness, and Safety Committee created two goals to encompass these ideas. In creating our health and wellness goal, it is important to recognize that a specific social, emotional learning goal can be found under competencies. Our first goal is to promote the health and social, emotional wellness of students by equipping each staff member with skills to identify related factors and enhance support systems. We created this goal specifically addressing the data from staff and students about providing stakeholders with the necessary skills and professional development to identify and reduce stressors while responding to students' needs. Christine will now introduce our second goal.
The second portion of our health, wellness, and safety plan is to maintain and improve all district facilities in conjunction with the District Safety and Security Plan. This is comprised of three main elements, the first two being the implementation and refinement of the existing safety and security plan as well as the capital improvement plans, which have been ongoing and have made great strides toward improving safety and conditions of our buildings. So we want to continue with those pieces and build upon them to ensure that we have safe and comfortable environments for our students as well as our staff. Finally, it encompasses a component of a review of the temperature management plan where we are continuing to gather data and making decisions about improvements to our facilities, as well as our responsiveness to the temperature within each of our classrooms and buildings aligned with all of the improvements that each building continues to make. That concludes our portion of the health, wellness, and safety school goal. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you to our action team chairs for sharing that information about the goals and the opportunities for action within each of the commitment areas. Where do we go next? The board will consider a resolution to adopt the strategic plan as presented at its meeting, its first meeting in June, on Monday, June 8th. And I just wanted to highlight that during the summer of 2020, we will need to develop reasonable year-long implementation goals that reflect the work necessary to not only implement the strategic plan, but to return from the COVID-19 school building closure. That will necessarily delay some of the actions while allowing us to highlight other areas. For example, voice and engagement will rise to the top as we work on our reentry plan, but others may need to be delayed until January 2021 or beyond as we work through our timelines. Each goal that you heard about is mapped to indicators from the whole child. Full details about how that takes place are available in the written strategic plan, which will be available on the district website. Once again, I thank the board for its support of this process over the last year and a half, to the community members, the students, the staff members, who all gave incredibly important information and feedback from their perspectives, to our action teams led by their co-chairs and their district liaisons for their work to take all that data and synthesize it into recommendations that are before you now for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much for everybody that participated in this great presentation. Moving on to discussion. Does any of the board members want to discuss anything about our presentation, the strategic plan? Anybody? None. Moving on to committee reports. Any committee reports? Mr. Breezy?
Mr. Bellman, thank you. Monday, May 4, the Finance, Operations, and Security Committee met virtually. Some of the items we discussed are, first and foremost, was some grant money, one of them being the NJSIG Safety Grant. The, there's a recommendation from administration to push this towards continuing, evolving some of the two-way radios that are in use by the district. There was a couple of questions around this. I mean, there's general support for this. We're gonna get back some, some questions that we had, and I don't expect any issues with that. Alyssa's Grant Law, there was money around $90,088,259 that was set aside for this. Mr. Barry, the legend, has come up with an alternative solution which meets the requirements of this law and also saves us a considerable amount of money. So the committee supported applying the difference of that towards the construction of a new security vestibule at Central School. And that was chosen because it's, the estimate for Central School very closely matches the funds that were left over. Some are fun. Dr. Mingle touched upon this in his opening remarks, and I think we probably all saw the the memo that was put forth regarding this. There's anything further there. Fire alarms, we had discussed a little bit. It was noted that some of the spending had increased in recent years on fire alarms due to some of the state laws and new requirements and fire marshal requests to enhance that kind of the inspections and scope of things. So certainly explained that. Middle school athletic fields, the committee discussed a little bit about this in terms of, you know, what it means, what the options were. There's, there's been a series of, I don't want to call it options, but I'll call them options, flavors of how to proceed or what it looks like and what the cost of each is with regards to this. And we talked about some community support for that as well. Traffic beacons came on the agenda again. The county acknowledged the delay in this. They did approve the proposed shared services agreement. And once the cost estimates are available, administration will bring those to the full board for their approval. Capital improvement plan, as with every meeting, I believe, we touch upon this and review this. This meeting, we looked closely at some of the items that were referendumable and were not. And one thing that did come out of that was the Warren Middle School parking lot being needed, and regardless of referendum or no referendum, it was, the committees supported moving forward with that. End-of-year monies, the buildings and grounds paving for a section of their driveway was discussed. It was $36,000, which doesn't meet the $40,000 threshold, but because of the aggregate of previous work with this company, it pushes us over that. So this will come, I believe, before the board, but the committee does support it. The next meeting is on June 15. That is all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breezy. Any other committee report? Otherwise, I'll provide an update. We met with the personal committee on Wednesday, the 29th of April. We had negotiations with the WTA. Due to the nature of the negotiations, we can't discuss any details. But we made significant progress, and we should be able to complete these negotiations at some time in the future soon. Moving on to public commentary. There are two public commentary sections. This is on agenda items only. The last public commentary section at the end is on everything. And if there's questions about the flexible learning instructions, then we should discuss these probably at the end after Dr. Mingle gave an overview of what's happening. Is there any public commentary? Please use the raise your hand feature or put something in the chat. I don't see anything in the chat. Dr. Mingle, do you see anybody using the raise your hand feature?
No, I don't.
I'll give another 30 seconds. Haven't seen any public commentary on the agenda items only. We are moving on to 13 items for board consideration. Does any member of the board wants to pull out an item for either discussion or a separate vote?
I would, Christian.
Mrs. DiMaggio, please.
C4, appointment of WTA staff for the 2021 school year. Separate vote, please.
Thank you very much. Anything else? Seeing none. Mrs. Swan, could you please?
Move the approval of items for board consideration, Section 13, Items A1 through 2, B1 through 12, C1 through 3, and C5 through 12.
Second, Mrs. Breezy?
Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Breezy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu? Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yeah.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Move for approval, items for board consideration, Section 13, Item C4.
Second?
Second, Bellman.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Breezy?
Abstain?
Mrs. Chu? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. I'm sorry, I can't hear. Abstain?
Yes.
Abstain.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Mrs. DiMaggio?
Abstain.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to unfinished business. I see there was no unfinished business. Was that moving on to new business? Return to school. Dr. Mingle?
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. And I'll try to keep it brief, and then I'll address any questions that come up from the board or the public during the public commentary section as well. We shifted, as I mentioned in my community video on Friday, from talking about just day-to-day operations to really thinking carefully about the return to school, whenever that may be. As you all know, the Somerset County Association of School Administrators, the county superintendents are meeting twice a week on this, and we're using the same model throughout the county for how we think through many challenges and questions that we will have to answer. Some were in the couple of hundred bullet points of different decisions that we'll need to make over the next few months. Most basic question is, when are we able to bring kids and staff back? And the answer is, when the governor gives the okay, then we will know what kind of the timeline is for that. There's a lot of discrepancy about whether that will even be September. And I think we, in our committees, are talking about multiple options. One is, we open on time as scheduled. One is, we open in some, open on time but in some kind of new format or new structure. And then the third one, where we begin the year in some kind of a flexible construction. With all of those things in mind, we're starting to work through those areas of concern around return to school. The model was shared in the video. It goes into much more detail. I expect to give updates in each Friday's weekly briefing from now forward. And offline, there had been some emailing with the board about the possibility of an ad hoc committee, perhaps the ad hoc strategic planning committee, taking on some offline responsibility for that. So that were, especially as we get into the summer, which is when the bulk of the work will be done, which is also when we are leased together as a board, we'll be able to keep everybody apprised. As far as the calendar of where we are, it's a little bit hard to believe this, but there's only a few weeks left in the school year, and that gets broken up by Memorial Day. So we have a full week this week. Next week is, leads into Memorial Day. Next Thursday was a scheduled half-day for students, with Friday being a day off for students, both of those being staff professional learning days. You'll get this in writing down the road, but there will not be a virtual field trip next week. Instead, on Thursday, the last day before Memorial Day weekend, is our first-ever virtual field day. The health and PE teachers have started putting out some publicity around that. They're extremely excited, doing a lot of work. So that'll be Thursday, the 21st. Schools are closed Friday through Monday. We reopen on Tuesday. It'll be four full days of instruction. There will not be a virtual field trip that week, as it is a shortened week already. Then we have two full weeks, and then it's the last two days of school. So if you think about Memorial Day as kind of the middle point, it'll very quickly be June 16th and us closing out. So a great deal of work being done right now about how end-of-year events will take place. Meeting with the PTO presidents tomorrow, which includes some of those topics. We have a plan for how we're getting our staff back into the district so they can close out their classrooms, so we can begin summer reconstruction and cleaning projects, how we can get materials back to students and back to us, and all of that. The overall vision of our effort is quite simply to safely return all students and staff to our school facilities. There's a lot more than just that, but that's the underlying mission or vision, if you will. The survey to the community on Friday and to staff last Thursday asked, what is the number-one priority you have from your perspective? All of that feedback is being coded and will be shared back out to the community later this week. But overwhelmingly, what we're hearing from everybody is, we have to figure out the safest way and whatever other considerations that brings, we need to work through. So that is our overwhelming vision. The top concerns seem to match at the parent and the staff member level, but like I said, we'll do more data analysis and show that out to the community. I think I'll stop there, turn it over to questions from the board, or we can get to the public commentary as well.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. As you have already mentioned that we might want to create a board, a committee, I want to create a return-to-school committee. And I would propose to use the chairs of the standing committees that we have and me as the president on that board. Do I have to make a motion for that? I assume yes. So I make a motion to appoint a return-to-school committee that's supporting the application with returning to school, created from the chairs of the three standing committees that we have, security, curriculum, and personal, and me as the president. And if any of these members doesn't want to be on that committee, please send me an email. I will appoint somebody else.
I will second that. I don't think you need to create a motion to create committee, so it's the president. But I'll second it.
Okay. Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Breezy?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu? Mrs. DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Moving on to discussion. Any board member, any questions, comments? Mr. Bishi?
Mr. Mingle, just one question. The three scenarios you went through are set forth by the county. So those three scenarios were just, we follow along with all the other districts in Somerset County with the three scenarios you mentioned at the beginning of your comments. Is that right?
Not exactly. So the return-to-school roadmap, which is the framework we're using, is around the whole county. Internally, we've talked about what those options might look like. They match what people are saying at the county, but it's not dictated by the county.
Thank you.
Any other? Mr., I think Mrs. Chu, will you raise your hand?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I think I missed the memo on like the summer fund. Is that continuing as planned, like the normal signup process that's been up? And all the classes are the same, but they're gonna be virtual? Or, I mean, there's some classes like the clay one, which would be hard, I think. Or I must have missed the memo on what the plan is for that to look like.
You're right. Not all the courses can run. At the same time, there are some courses that weren't in the original menu that are now available. So it's a whole new course catalog.
Okay, and that course catalog is on, on our site?
Yes.
Mr. Franco, I saw your hand. Please go ahead.
Yeah, so I just, I'm curious if we have done an analysis yet or if we have some understanding as to how much of the curriculum that was originally scheduled to be covered for the school year will actually be covered? And what, if we know kind of where our deficiency will be with respect to that, to see how much catch-up we have to do either over the summer or in the next school year? So I wonder if you could speak to that a little bit?
We don't know the answer yet about deficiencies, whether there are and where. That is actually, I think, item two on the instruction sub-goal of the return-to-school committee, is to develop clear methods. We talked about whether we could do that while kids are still out, but there are all kinds of problems with how to do that assessment virtually. So there will be extensive assessment whenever we're back together in reading, writing, and math, so that we can then adjust. As far as the first part of the question of how much curriculum will actually be covered, one of the first things we did back the week before spring break is the grade-level teachers all met in teams and went and read ahead through their curriculum to come to an agreement on what are the essential pieces that have to happen before the end of the school year for students to be ready to move on. So that is already in place, but the assessment piece will come when we're back in person.
So do we know how much was kind of edited out? Do we have some sense of order of magnitude on that?
I can't answer that right now. That was a decision made at the grade level, so I could look more into that if you'd like.
I think it would be helpful.
Mr. Franco, your... Ms. Taylor, please go ahead.
I just had a question, and you might have said this in one of the scenarios, so apologize. I'm asking something already said, but are we, in that roadmap, is there any consideration of parents, like surveying parents to see if they want to send kids back or how comfortable they are?
Yes, so there are several places in the roadmap where there are different engagements, whether that be about students or parents. The question you specifically just raised about how parents are feeling about sending their kids back, that came up in some of the surveys from parents as well. There was a comment of, you know, don't assume that parents are comfortable with their kids going back to school. That, there are huge number of considerations that are somewhat outside of our control as well from the state. But yes, there will be engagement opportunities under those committees.
Mr. Breezy, please.
So I appreciate the update. It sounds like the summer's gonna be busy for administration. I think that's probably an understatement, and I have... I think that's probably an understatement and I have, I think we all know that it's busy regardless. So I don't know, I'm trying to think this through in terms of certainly uncharted territory that we have here. I don't, the board only meets, I think, once in July and once in August for its its summer sessions. I'm wondering if we should look at dates that work if we need to meet. I don't know if we need to, we don't run the district, certainly you, the administration team does. But if there's any crazy support requests of, oh, we got this money, but we can't spend it till the board approves it. And we just met yesterday kind of thing. So we're stuck. I just wouldn't want the the district to be in that position. So just, just a thought.
I want to also answer a small part of this question. That's why I intended to create this committee so that we can meet quickly to discuss these items. But you're absolutely correct. We cannot approve anything. And with that, I want to point to Dr. Mingle about this part of the question.
Yeah, I think it's very possible that we will need to adjust our calendar in the summer. Until we have timelines, right now we're working under assumptions. But until we have definitive timelines from above us, it's hard to predict. But it's quite possible that, you know, there's an announcement made in the middle of July and we quickly have to either issue a new contract or something else. So that is a possibility. And we could talk, maybe that's a topic for the first ad hoc committee about, even if we just kind of tentatively block off some dates, just in case or something.
Any other discussion? Otherwise, I just want to mention that I'm really thankful that the gap analysis is high on the district agenda. I'm also concerned that the academic goals are achieved. There is no testing going on, so I think it is very important that when we reopen that we test diligently to make sure that we can all get back and challenge every kid individually as to the highest potential of everybody. Was that completing the discussion of new business? Or is there any other motion, any other question or comment from the board about the other items or return to school? I'm Mr. DiMaggio, please go ahead.
Thank you. Dr. Mingle, have, is yours, has staff been asking to get into the building to get to their materials that they might need? And are we, how are, how are you allowing them to enter and get their, not only materials they need for their curriculum, but also I assume they have some personal things there still? And just how is that being controlled and regulated, et cetera?
Yeah. So we actually started allowing staff in using, following all the guidance that we have. Was that the week after spring break, I think it was the first time. It's now been a handful of times. So they sign up on a Thursday, we spend a weekend preparing a schedule so that the timing is right, so that people are spaced at the right times and the right places. They have appropriate protective equipment when they get there, so on and so forth. So everybody who's wanted to be there has been there. And we will be announcing later this week with our staff, a plan for getting them back in there for a final time for this.
Mr. Brazee, please.
That just made me think of something. So I had the honor of driving to one of the schools to pick up supplies for one of my kids. It was, it was phenomenal. It was like straight, not everything went exactly how it was documented. And there was, I mean, kudos to the staff for all they did to that. I can't imagine getting all that material out, but they did it. So thank you to them.
I second that. Thank you. I saw a motion, I saw a hand from Mr. Bellish.
Yes, just on the topic of this, this gap analysis, I just wanted to ask to the extent that there is a gap analysis conducted, that there be a discussion around whether or not it's appropriate for that gap analysis to be shared broadly across the community to parents in their respective grade level. Thank you.
Mr. Mingle, will you answer that question?
I took note of it. That would be one of the subcommittee topics for discussion.
Understood.
Right. Thank you.
Any other? Ms. Song, is that a?
We have two other items on new business. Are those going to be discussed before we move on?
You can discuss them now. There was not a formal discussion, I think, planned. Please, yes, this is the discussion about.
Okay. Well, I just didn't know if there was any action required. With regard to the township development, I think that there was that the committee was seeking the board's consent approval to circulate a letter under your signature and Dr. Mingle's signature. And I think with regard to, I have some questions with regard to the resolution, but if we take them one at a time, do you need the board to comment on your, the township development letter? And if so, would now be the time to do that?
Yes, we should also discuss if anybody has feedback about these items before we make a motion, potential motion.
I think the letter should go if it hasn't.
And the resolutions regarding the local tax levy payments.
I, if I may.
Please.
Um, yeah, I'd like to understand a little better the the timeframes here. They were presented to us as extraordinarily tight. One of the dates listed in various publications that I saw with regard to these, the Senate and House bills or Assembly bills actually had today's date. Are we already too late? Is there an additional action that's taking place? Did something happen today? I haven't had a chance to check.
Mrs. Lundherr might be better prepared for that.
Yeah.
As I knew, but it might be old news, is that one house was voting on Tuesday and one house was voting on Thursday. So we would get this letter out ASAP. I think I've shared with the entire board at different times, although I am concerned about state aid. When you talk about the tax levy in this district, now you're really talking a concerning scenario.
Please, Ms. Song, continue.
Um, I mean, I think I I read someplace that there was that we were contemplating not only putting this resolution up for a vote with the board, but also instructing a board representative, Mr. Bellman, you as president or some other designee, to actually by phone reach out to the relevant representatives of our of our community to try to voice the Warren Board's views on the pending legislation. Is that something we're still looking to do? And if so, Mr. Bellman, are you available to make those calls?
If the board passes a resolution for me to do that, I'm happy to do that. Yes.
Okay. Do you need a motion?
Yes, for those items, we would need motion.
Okay, then. Well, why don't we, not seeing anything else, why don't we make those motions? I mean, I would move that the letter drafted to be directed to the township committee with regard to township development, let that be sent.
One second, Franco.
Thank you. Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu. Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco. Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I would also. I'd like to make a motion to approve the draft resolution with regard to the local tax levy payments.
Second, DiMaggio.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu. Mrs. DiMaggio.
Yes.
Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Brazee votes yes as well.
Did I miss you?
That's okay.
I'm very sorry.
That's quite all right. I understand.
Mrs. Song, please continue.
Okay. I'd like to make a motion that the board is direct the president of the Board of Education to reach out to Senate and Assembly representatives of our district in support of the just passed resolution regarding local tax levy payments.
One second.
Mr. Bellish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Brazee.
Yes.
I am sorry. Mrs. Chu.
Yes.
Is it DiMaggio?
Yes.
Mrs. Frank, Mr. Franco. Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Happily, yes.
Motion carries.
It seems that this is the end of the discussion of the board about new business items. Any other discussion? Wonderful. Moving on to public commentary. This is about any topic, again, agenda items, non-agenda items. It is three minutes, a limit of three minutes. And could you please state your name?
Mr. M, I don't know if you can see it, but Mrs. Landau has a hand raised.
Please.
Unmute yourself to be able to.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, very well. Please go ahead.
Okay. I'm sorry. Am I supposed to still state my address and all that?
Please go ahead. Yes.
Meredith Landau, 40 Christie Drive. I have two questions. The first is regarding eighth graders. Are we working at all with the other sending districts to the high school to make sure our eighth graders are not behind as compared to the other students entering the freshman class? And then the second question is regarding fifth graders moving to the middle school. Typically, this time of year, they have presentations about foreign language choices. There's math assessments. How are those, are those things going to happen?
Dr. Mingle, do you want to address these two questions?
So there are a few other people in the chat, so I can address all of them at once at the end. Mrs. Lubeck is the next person who requested.
Yes. Hi, Catherine Lubeck, 11 Jessica Lane. I am curious as to whether there's been any discussions surrounding the return of supplies, such as the Chromebooks or or anything that possibly could have been left in the middle school lockers. I know my daughter couldn't carry anymore. So for instance, she has her locker shelves. It's not a big deal, but just curious if there's any discussions surrounding that.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Yes, Mrs. Singleton.
Mrs. Singleton, please go ahead, state your name and address. You are still muted.
Rachel Singleton, 22, Dealwood Trail West. Yeah, I wanted to say that Mr. Jones, third grade Mount Horrib, absolutely awesome in his instruction, the limited time that he has with his class. However, I have noticed already compared to my older two children that things are sliding in the in the curriculum, what's being taught and what had been taught previously in the same timeframe. So I've been able to compare that to my older two. And so I was wondering how that's going to be addressed. Clearly, it's not going to get addressed before the end of the school year, but it really does need to be addressed because particularly children with IEPs who have learning differences are falling further behind. And the the social isolation that all children must be feeling now is going to compound their ability to learn and what they're getting from classes. So when we get back to school, there's going to be a wealth of children with a lot of these differences. So I just want to say, I hope that there's something being looked at to address that because we're going to have a whole load of kids who are going to need a lot of help to get back onto par. And I would rather see them get back onto par than lower the standards and just push children on saying, oh, it's okay for this grade level to continue without knowing X, Y and Z from from grade three, say. They all really do need to, you know, meet the bar that the that that has been set before the before the virus impacted schools in the way it did.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any, any other comment? It seems that there is none. I will wait for another 30 seconds. Please put something in the group chat or use the raise your hand feature on the reactions at the bottom. Dr. Mingle, would you please go ahead with the remarks?
So, so let's see. The first question was about working with the other sending districts. And I do meet with the other Watchon Hills Regional High School superintendents. The, in addition, we have county meetings, which doesn't include Long Hill, but includes all the others that occur at the superintendent level, at the curriculum leader level and at the special education director level. So all of those have have been occurring. Now, I will say, our curriculum across those districts is not the same under regular circumstances. So it doesn't mean that the curriculum is exactly the same, but we've shared things like the model we use of asynchronous versus synchronous decisions that we made about grading, all of those things. Not exactly the same, but definitely there's continual discussion. And they're having the same discussions at the high school about how do you address, especially for incoming ninth graders, differences in readiness level. Not only will that help with this situation, but it'll help just in general, because that's not something that's typically typically done. And with the fifth grade internally, the fifth grader moving to sixth grade, Mr. Valora and Ms. Mensinger are working on the virtual versions of what has typically been an in-person visit where they went down to each elementary school, talked about the foreign language options, the world language options, the process for scheduling and all of that. So they, there is a virtual version of that coming and then discussions. And with all of these things, it's with the giant caveat of depending on what we're allowed to do about what that might look like in August and September as far as bringing people together in person. So there is information coming about that. We have, so the question about things like placement, this is not only for fifth to sixth grade, but also our advanced math classes at the middle school. Sometimes we get, we have enough information about our student performance all the way through the third marking period that we can make. We were already in the process of making the recommendation, but we have that that data and then we can address later if we need to. Supply discussions are happening in both directions. So the information we're, we'll share later this week with our staff is about getting them in. That includes emptying things that might be in lockers at the middle school or student belongings in elementary school desks, bagging those so that they're labeled, much like the K one and two pickup was, for those of you that experienced that, so that we can then set up. And it's a little bit tricky. We're not going to do it too soon because we also need to get back technology. But setting up a time right before the end of the school year for us to give back to families, any belongings of students, but also for us to get back school district belongings, like library books and textbooks and computers and that sort of thing. So that's, that's all in the works and coming. And some of those things fall under the return to school framework. So there's really three sort of timelines in the county framework or in the national framework. One is things we need to do immediately now that we know we're not coming back. Things that we need to do before we get back in, which would be, you know, by August. And then things that we need to do once we're back in. And that gets to a lot of Mrs. Singleton's comments about the both mental and physical health needs of students, social emotional wellness, what are the academic regressions? Are there, there might be cases where there are students, we're hearing from some parents, where they're thriving in this environment without distractions of other things. So we might have some kids who fell behind and other kids who went ahead. Sense of all that and then making decisions about what that means. The things we'll bring to the ad hoc committee before the end of the school year, our thoughts about making sure we have school counselors available throughout the summer. It's a, you know, six months or so is a long time to go without us seeing the kids. And so even with kids checking in synchronously, it's not the same as our staff having direct contact in other ways. And so we will talk about the availability of counselors, not only over the summer, but obviously when we come back to school. We're very fortunate in Warren that our student to counselor ratio is excellent in general. So we have the mental health professionals in place. And as far as, you know, the question about students with IEPs, there are many questions at, all the way at the federal level about the role of things like our summer ESY program. So when we talk about summer fund for most of our families, that's the enrichment program. But our summer program also includes academic support for students that we deem to need some extra support in the summer and also an extended school year program for some of our special education students who receive special education services. All of those things will take place in the summer in some version or another, but we're waiting on some guidance. Once we get through that process, then we can figure out, are there things we need to do, not only in September, but all the way through next school year? If you look at the roadmap, it talks about developing a long-term glide path for assessing the needs and then making sure you have reasonable expectations for growth, you know, without getting into specifics because of privacy. Without getting into specifics because of privacy, you know, I've shared with the board in some memos, and I shared in my update, we have a huge variety of places of where our kids are right now, both academically, but also in wellness terms. So, we have some students who have been displaced from the community and are staying with relatives in other communities. We have students with food insecurity issues that we've never had before. We have cases where we had at-risk students that are hard to be in contact with on a regular basis for various reasons. We have families that are struggling because it's really hard to take care of multiple kids in a house and take care of their own jobs and responsibilities. There's a huge range of needs that I know everybody's aware of, but all of those things. Roadmap is to make sure we have a plan that encapsulates all of those things to the best we can, not knowing exactly what we'll find when we all get back in person.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. With that, I want to open it up to once more public commentary, if there's any. Once again, please add a comment in the chat or raise your hand. Wonderful. What is that? We are moving on to item 17. Ms. Stone, could you please?
Certainly. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 104-11, permits the Board of Education to meet in closed session to discuss certain matters. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Board of Education adjourns to closed session to discuss a collective bargaining agreement and/or negotiations related to it. Action will not be taken upon return to public session. The length of the meeting is anticipated to be approximately 10 minutes. And be it further resolved, the minutes of this closed session be made public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
Second?
Second, Mr. DiMaggio.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, the board is now going into exact.